Evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City of Sebastian Planning and Zoning Commission and local planning agency meeting Thursday, June 20, 2019, to order. Can we all please rise for the pendulations?
I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're safe. To the Republic. One nation under God, invisible liberty.
And justice for all.
I'd like to first make some announcements. Chairman Cottenberg is excused, and Mr. Yugen is also excused from tonight's meeting. Mr. Simmons and Mr. Mahdi will be voting in their place.
And Mr. Reyes, for the record, Jan is going to do roll call.
Thank you. I should have done that firsthand.
And is your --
Mrs. Graham, will you please do roll call?
Yes. Are your microphones on?
Both on. That's new to me, but I have them both on. I think they can hear me anyway.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Reyes?
Present.
Mr. Mahdi?
Present.
Mr. Kizobash?
Here.
And Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One new announcement. I'd like to move the new business to first on the agenda instead of our public hearing. We would need a vote. Can I just get a verbal vote on that? A hands-up vote on that from the commissioners? We'd like to move the accessory structure first so that they won't have to wait for our presentation.
I'll put a minute.
I'm way out of order. Okay. Okay, we have our meeting minutes from our April 18, 2019, meeting. We'd like to get a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Have they been reviewed as submitted?
I'll make a motion that they be approved as submitted the April 18, 2019, meeting.
Second.
Mr. Simmons makes a motion, and Mr. -- I'm sorry. Mr. Roth makes a motion, and Mr. Simmons makes a second, please.
Correct.
At this time, I would like if Mr. Stokes could --
I can voice hold. Sorry. Voice hold on a minute.
I'm sorry. Okay, can we get a vote on the meeting minutes? Please.
Mr. Kizobash?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Mahdi?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Okay, now that the meeting minutes have been approved properly, we can move on to our next agenda item, which has been changed. We have -- now we'll need to vote on that through the commissioners. Are all the commissioners okay with moving this new business item to the first item on the agenda?
Yes.
Can we take a verbal vote on that?
Yes.
I guess do roll call for a vote. We're going to move the new business to first item on the agenda before the public hearing.
Yeah.
Sorry.
What's he doing right now? What is he doing?
Mr. Reyes?
Yeah. Neither of these items are quasi-judicial tonight, so we don't have to swear any of the witnesses or just go into the hearings.
But I think that you -- that you have --
I think I was reading what somebody presented to me here, and it says we're changing an agenda item. It says it requires commissioner votes on it. Do we have unanimous vote to change the agenda item to first?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Stokes, could you --
Yeah. You're fine. You were just taking something out of order, which is a prerogative of the chair. But anyway, we're where we need to be. So you're going to take the new business, item A, first.
Okay. Can you read the item title, please, and swear in anybody that's going to be presenting, please?
Okay. We're not going to swear in anybody because these aren't quasi-judicial. But as far as the item --
The accessory structure review item, please.
Yes, this is an accessory structure review of the Land Development Code, Section 54-2-7.5 at 910 Greenbrier Avenue.
At this time, can the applicant please come up? Or the applicant? Please state your name, address for the public, please.
Robert C. Hatch, 910 Greenbrier Avenue, Sebastian.
Okay. If you can let us know a little bit about your project and what your plans are.
Okay. Well, I purchased the lot next door, a corner lot next to me, to my primary residence in anticipation of not having to build or build a house, number one. And number two, to, you know, landscape it, put a driveway in and a carport that I can put my boat into with a storage shed behind it. Since then, I've landscaped. I've kept the perimeter of pine trees. I planted 12 palms on each corner within the property lines. And I'm going to do more landscaping to make it look nice. And I've had a lot of compliments from my neighbors already.
Okay. Does staff have a presentation on?
Yes, this application is before you, based on the size. This is a smaller accessory structure before you. It's only 540 square feet. That 40 extra square feet required it to come and be reviewed by the commission. Through our staff report and our checklist, as you can see, it's not going to be higher than the house. It is a carport, so it is fairly open. They are going to order it's going to be as close as to matching the house color as can be, as that the product allows. They have already pulled their auxiliary driveway permit. The pipe in the right-of-way is in, and it has been constructed already. It's milling. And we did some pictures. We went past the site. It is a corner lot, so there's a 25-foot setback required on that secondary front yard, which they are meeting. I believe their side setback is 50 feet. They have kept a nice buffer of trees, some palmettos and some pine trees. And based what's on that second lot, they're definitely going to meet the requirement of the double lot landscaping that's needed. We do have a unity title on file, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. All right, at this time, commissioners, start with Mr. Carter. Any questions?
No comments. No questions.
Yes, my only concern is because it's on a corner lot, so he already explained that he's going to put a buffer there because it's very important. Otherwise, it'd be exposed from the street. It's not a good-looking structure. It has to be landscaping heavily.
Staff has gone by, and there still is a good buffer remaining. I mean, they have cleared out the peppers. They've cleared out some of the grub. They've grubbed it and brushed. But there's a pretty good buffer still on that corner.
That's my only concern.
Mr. Mahdi?
The picture that was presented shows the Carolina carport is what you're using?
Correct.
Question I have, is that going to be placed on a slab? Or is it --
It's a asphalt milling, pressed, rolled.
Okay. So the only question I have.
Right. Come over to the far end, Mr. Simmons.
Yeah, I have one question, which I'm assuming since 7A is not checked, it's not applicable as far as the structure, the corrugated metal or anything?
Yeah, if I may answer. I had a question, and I called the carport area. And it's not corrugated. It's just steel, flat steel. Because I wanted to clarify that point also, because it wasn't checked.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
I have no --
No, I have no comments.
Mr. Roth?
Just clarification, the driveway is milled. There is a storage area in the back of the carport.
Correct.
Is that going to have a foundation? A floor?
It's all one foundation with, you know, four foot. It's part of the overall 30 by 18, and the 5 by 18 is part of the structure in the back. And it's got a rolling door for storage.
And what I was asking is the flooring on it. Will that be a concrete floor there?
That's part of the milling also.
Milling also.
Yeah.
Okay. And I was by it. It does have very nice landscaping on the street side. So, and you've done an excellent job on that.
Thank you.
My only thought is that the trim, and maybe it's some of the drawings. These aren't always accurate, but it's representative of what you're doing. The trim, will that be to match the house?
It's not exactly matching, but I understand it has to be similar for 500, between 500 and 750 square feet. So I actually changed the color to gray, which is the same color as my roof.
Okay. So that would be the vertical posts and the fascia boards?
Yeah, there is no -- I don't know if it shows a gable there or not, but that gable, it doesn't exist. Yeah, that gable is gone.
Oh, okay.
That's just, that was on the lot when I was buying it. That was a representation. It was, it's actually the same size, but the gable doesn't exist because of the boat going in. I need that room.
Okay, understand.
I don't want to hit that.
Yeah, understand. And that's why we ask, is because, you know, the pictures aren't always exactly representative and just to make clear.
Correct.
So the siding on that will be that, I think was indicated as a --
Quaker gray.
Blue?
Well, no, it's not the blue. I originally had the blue, but they wanted it to be a little bit more similar. My second choice was the Quaker gray, so I just went with the Quaker gray.
Okay. That's why there was a question on one, and yeah, okay, that's good. So that'll be a gray.
Right.
Okay. And the roof color?
Is gray.
Is gray. Okay. And I noted that all of your actions in the past have been submitted and approved as far as the driveway, the curb cut, and the milling and all that.
Yes.
So good job on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
It looks fine.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. I actually have no questions on this one.
Okay.
I did have one question, was the driveway, but it was answered right away. I guess. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This time, I guess we can -- any other commissioner questions on this project?
The house is very nice. Billy did a good job.
Okay, Mrs. Graham, let's take a vote.
Okay. I need a motion for approval for this project?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Mahdi.
Second.
A second by Mr. Simmons. Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Kizobash?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Mahdi?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You got your carport.
Thank you.
You got your carport.
Okay, so I can go back to our regular order of meeting here, which are our next item on the agenda. Mr. Stokes, can you read the title of it for me, please?
Yes, Agenda Item 6A is a review of a proposed comprehensive plan text amendment to the future land use element, conservation and coastal management element, and public facilities element with regards to adaptation of the coastal resiliency plan. This also is not quasi-judicial. It's legislative in nature, so.
Okay. I would imagine we have somebody presenting. Will the city be doing their presentation first, or?
Yes, Mr. Chair. My name's Lisa Frazier, for those of you who don't know. This evening, what has occurred is that we submitted to DEP for a coastal resiliency grant to meet the needs of the legislative requirement for, it was entitled peril and flood, in order to add that language to our comprehensive plan. It then was changed, and when I say was changed, it was changed several years ago, or maybe last year, to make it more of a coastal resiliency plan. So when we went after the grant, it's for coastal resiliency study to be done for the city, and then that language to be incorporated into our comprehensive plan. We received a $50,000 grant for this work. We hired our continuing services contractor consultant, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, to assist us with the plan, which you all have a copy of, which was previously sent. This looks familiar. And now what Kim Lee Horn is doing, in accordance with the grant, is that they're adding that applicable language into our comprehensive plan. Now, in a perfect situation, we would then be receiving your input, your recommendation, passing it on to City Council, who would then bring it up to DEO for incorporation into our, the final incorporation into our comprehensive plan. However, our comprehensive plan needs a complete update by next September. So we don't want to incorporate these things officially yet. What we need to do is continue to work on the comprehensive plan through the next year and do the complete update, the data and analysis that needs to be done with all of our elements, and then incorporate the changes that we'll look at this evening. So from here, this information that we talk about this evening and that we pull together, we need to submit it back to DEP to finalize the grant, and we have to do that by the end of this month. But then that, this information is still going to be a recommendation from this commission that will eventually be brought to the council when we've taken the time to update all of the data analysis and look at all of these elements concurrently. I hope that makes sense to everyone. This is not a waste of time. This is a great exercise for us, not only to get these important elements into our comprehensive plan, but also get this, the planning commission used to looking at our comprehensive plan and looking at the changes that we'll have to approve and incorporate in for the next year. So we're taking a big chunk out of it this evening, and I'm really excited to get this done and keep moving forward. For your information, we've also applied for another grant from DEO, a planning grant for $40,000 to help us assist with revising the entire future land use element. We're hopeful to receive those dollars, but we won't know until next month. So we're slowly taking chunks out of this big, huge job that we have before us, and we appreciate all of your time and your effort in assisting us in moving forward. So this evening, we have our planning consultants here to give us a presentation on what they've done and all of the changes that you have before you. Something that may assist you is the spreadsheet that I submitted to you. This kind of gives you a good summary of what the changes are and where they've been incorporated. I've also asked them to do additional, add additional policies in the plan, and they've done that. So Phil, we'll talk about it tonight. So to do the presentation, we have Philip Di Maria and Amanda Brandon from Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And without further ado, yes, please, thank you.
If I may ask?
Of course.
One question, and I'm going to ask of the other commissioners. The March of 2019 coastal resiliency plan or study that was done by Kim Lee Horn, when was that sent to us? I don't recall, and I've been reviewing everything, and it references that constantly. I don't recall receiving it.
You were sent a link to the document prior to this meeting. It is on our website. It was sent to the council for their final approval, because this didn't require the planning and zoning board's review. It required the council. Yes, sir. So this is the coastal resiliency plan, which outlines our vulnerability areas in the city and then some action items. Now, Kim Lee Horn is taking the parts of this and putting it in the applicable comprehensive plan elements, which is coastal management and conservation, along with some portions of the public facilities and the future land use element. Remember that our conservation and coastal management and public facilities elements have not been updated since 1999. So the data and analysis is woefully behind. And so what we're attempting to do as we move forward is to make this document more of a workable document, a document that doesn't just sit on a shelf, but one that we actually can refer to and help lead the city in their development needs in the future. So one of the concepts is to combine the coastal management and conservation elements into one, since they really overlap anyway. You know, in a conservation element, you're going to be talking about your flood plains and preservation of wetlands and riparian ways, and yet in coastal management, you're going to be doing the same things, because you want to be able to protect those areas in order to help you and your coastal resiliency. So that's one of the moves we are making, is to combine our coastal management and conservation element into one.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm just surprised that we were only hearing of that on June 5 through an email, and yet it was started back in November 2. There was a meeting of 2018. Can I ask who represented the city at that meeting, November 2, 2018?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what --
It was a planning meeting on this project.
What meeting are we referring to?
It was, it was, there was a meeting. It was a staff meeting, where we did meet with stormwater, all the departments for, to gather, and they, Kim Lee Horn had let us know what information they needed to put together that coastal resiliency plan.
Yes.
It was a staff meeting on who was going to get the information, accumulate that together, and get that to Kim Lee Horn.
And that was just for the coastal resiliency plan? That's what was started back in the fall. The comp plan elements were just initiated about a month or so ago, after the plan was completed.
And we were never even updated of any type that this project was started. It was never mentioned in any of our meetings. That's what puzzles me.
Well, the plan did not require the planning and zoning commission's review. This was a plan that was initiated by staff, but approved by the city council.
We may not have been required to authorize it or anything like that, but as a point of information, rather than just on the 5th, having everything presented to us to look at, and then here's the project.
I should clarify.
I'm just puzzled at that.
Well, and I believe that if you look in your meeting minutes, this was actually brought to your attention, that we had been working on this in the April meeting. So coastal resiliency plan, I did talk to you about that it had been completed and finalized and was going to be on the website, and that the second part of the grant would be to update certain portions of the comprehensive plan and bring it to this commission for their review.
If I may, Mr. Roth, we may all have some questions after our consultant presented his presentation for the city's coastal resiliency plan. If you don't mind, sir, if you don't mind, you can go ahead with your presentation.
Sure. Thank you, commissioners. So Ms. Frazier gave us a really good overview of kind of the background and the information as far as the grant process is concerned. I'm just going to really quickly go through some of the background information and give you a brief overview of what led us to these comprehensive plan amendments that we're presenting tonight. So first thing to start with is the state legislation changes that occurred in 2015 that propagated some of the trickle-down effects that lead to some of the municipal changes. Then we'll review some of the findings in the resiliency plan and recommendations, one of which was certain comprehensive plan amendments. We'll go over the specific amendments. And then we have two future resiliency strategies that we just want to put before you tonight, get some input on, because as Ms. Frazier said, this is just one initiative of many that will be incorporated into the final comprehensive plan update. And then finally, we'll open up to questions and comments. So as stated before, it all began in 2015 with this Peril of Flood Act. So Senate bill passed almost unanimously and signed by Governor Rick Scott. There are three parts to the bill, but one of which really trickled down to municipal comprehensive plans, and that's what we're going to talk about today. So the 2015 Peril of Flood Act required Florida coastal communities to address flood risks. So keep in mind that it's just coastal communities that it applies to, and there are several criteria that it outlines, one of which is high tide events, storm surge, flash flood, stormwater runoff, and sea level rise into the coastal management element of the local government comprehensive plan. There's just some language here, but that's taken directly from Florida statute. So that Chapter 163 outlines every single local government's comprehensive plan, the mandatory requirements within that comprehensive plan, and then also some optional requirements. The Peril of Flood Act, it was a mandatory requirement to incorporate these changes into the comprehensive plan. So we talked about just briefly, Kim Lee Horn underwent with our stormwater engineers this coastal resiliency plan. And really, that was a engineering look at critical infrastructure within the city, which, what pieces of those critical infrastructures, whether they be pipes, whether they be lift stations, whether they be roadways, what are the most vulnerable aspects of that infrastructure? Where are they? How vulnerable are they? Are they? And what changes can we make to make those slightly less vulnerable or protected? Several things came out of that resiliency plan. We ran several models to come up with certain adaptation strategies. And some of these adaptation strategies were cheap and easy to fix. Some will probably take some time or a significant increase in money. But one of the pieces that's probably the lowest-hanging fruit are these comprehensive plan amendments that we're going to be discussing today. The vulnerability assessment is prepared to analyze the critical infrastructure, as I stated before, but it really looks at these multi-variable flood events. And so we incorporated several different scenarios, one of which was a sea level rise forecast, one of which was 100-year flood forecast, 25-year floods, high tide events, really painting a picture of what is the worst-case scenario for the city of Sebastian? What could possibly occur within the next 100 years or 50 years? And how protected or how ready is the city for that event? And what types of impacts would it have to the city's critical infrastructure? We defined existing street and structure levels of service. These are short-term actions. I misspoke. I'm sorry. We locate, or we suggest that we locate and map all city outfalls. We suggest that retrofit those outfalls with inline check valves to inhibit coastal flooding. And then last but not least, update the comprehensive plan elements specific to peril flood and the analysis conducted. We'll get into the meat of things now. It's not the most exciting stuff, but it does have pretty big impacts to how we look at future iterations of the comprehensive plan and how the city addresses development in the future along its coastline. in the future along its coastline. The goal of this was to incorporate this resiliency plan into the comprehensive plan. And I'll zoom out just a little bit, and this will become part of the discussion during the full comprehensive plan update. But what happens during these comprehensive plan updates is cities undergo plans and analyses during that time, as Ms. Fraser spoke about, and incorporate that into their data and analysis. And all of this new data and analysis that has occurred over the last 30 years since 1999, in this case for the coastal and conservation elements, are applicable and should be reflected within the respective elements. And so, this 2019 coastal resiliency plan really generated the most current and modern resources to generate a modern data and analysis for the plan. Incorporating these into the comprehensive plan is important just to reflect potential mitigation strategies, also to update the elements with coastal development best practices and recognize the risk and potential impacts of flooding. And then, also, and probably both most importantly and least importantly for the city itself, but to comply with state statutes. So, I'll just take this time as an opportunity to speak about state statutes and the importance of complying with those state statutes. That allows the city to continue to receive grant money, to receive state stipends for certain items. It allows insurance claims to stay low, or insurance rates to stay low. And all of these pieces of the pie are important to making sure that the city of Sebastian is in good favor with the state. So, the Kimley Horn planning team began with a review of the current policies, objectives, and goals in the three major elements. Those are the land use element, public facilities element, and coastal management and conservation elements. I say three here because eventually, we're looking to combine the coastal management and conservation elements, which currently exist as two separate chapters. So, when we began our analysis, there were four separate elements that we found really, really high-level and relevant opportunities for change. City staff reviewed these proposed changes based on best practices in the resiliency plan, and we came to an agreement on a draft of comprehensive plan amendments. When we began drafting the comprehensive plan amendments, we found that there were 12 opportunities within the land use element to recognize the resiliency plan, eight amendments within the public facilities element to recognize the resiliency plan. And then, finally, in the coastal management and conservation elements, which is probably where we spent the most of our time and energy, we found the opportunity to consolidate the two chapters, six objectives within those chapters, 12 policies, resulting in a unified conservation and coastal management element. And then, also, opportunities to take direct language from the plan and incorporate it within that element, to make sure that any future land development code updates, comprehensive plan updates, are all consistent with this latest and greatest analysis that we conducted as part of the 2019 coastal resiliency plan. Once again, there are certain reasons why we looked at the coastal management and conservation elements as an opportunity for consolidation. First of all, and probably most important, is the functionality and readability of the document. We see very often across the state, these documents that truly sit on shelves. No one opens them, they're dusty, they don't get opened in 30 years, right? I mean, this one hasn't been opened since 1999. So, there was a real opportunity here to make it a functional document that city staff, yourselves, city council members can point to and say, you know, within our comprehensive, what does it say inside of our comprehensive plan? What type of consistency do they have with that? How can we make it a document that is readable and truly usable? And so, taking that kind of approach is something that is, there have been more opportunities in recent years because of changes at the state level, and using those opportunities here at a local level is something that we advise. We updated the element to rectify invalid cross-references and element references. Moving around certain goals, objectives, and policies could lead to either some confusion or just opportunities to really cross-reference and make sure that everything's pointing the right way. We deleted several dates within the comprehensive plan element, this one specifically. They make updates in the plan to code changes. So, part of our analysis was looking back at land development code updates that have occurred over the years to find whether or not those changes were made that were mandated by the comprehensive plan, and, you know, deleting those references if they had been made, and if they haven't been made, then retaining them within. And once again, that resulted in six fewer objectives, 12 fewer policies, and 10 fewer pages, which I think is an important piece to note here. You took two elements, combined them together, retained all of the very, very important high-level things, and also added some resiliency language, some things that will lead to a more resilient city, and resulted in 10 fewer pages. I think that's kind of neat. I can spend as little or as much time as you want on these, but these are the specific listing of those amendments. If you prefer, I'll run through them very quickly, and then if you have any questions, we can address those after the fact. But there are two new conservation policies or objectives added. Pieces of this include adding just a brief description to explain that the two chapters were consolidated. That's a kind of a state statute concern. We need to address that these elements satisfy state statute needs and requests. A new goal to encompass the goals of both coastal management and conservation. We edited several objectives and policies under those objectives that were redundant or were no longer relevant. We saw opportunities to move objectives underneath others that, where it made sense, where we talked about habitat. We took other pieces of the plan that also spoke about habitats for manatees or sea turtles and/or pelicans and moved them under each other so that it readied more functionally. We looked at opportunities for best management practices as well. So, there were several pieces of the resiliency plan that talked about development types and development design standards. So, encouraging those development design standards within the plan was addressed. We merged several objectives and consolidated policies just to increase the readability of the plan as stated previously. There are certain resiliency plan language also added under several objectives, and you'll probably see in several parts of references to the resiliency plan as well. That is a state statute option, rather than repeating ourselves over and over, just adopting by reference, and that gives us the ability to create updates more functionally and appropriately. These are just several other objectives that were modified.
Excuse me to throw them for a second. All this that you're saying, is that in here?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, I just wanted to give us some examples of these amendments as well, so we can talk about maybe how the resiliency plan was incorporated into this comprehensive plan. So, the first one here is in the Chapter 5, which is our new conservation and coastal management element, Policy 5171, and really addresses directing populations away from known areas that are vulnerable to flooding and inundation and sea level rise. These are areas that are addressed within the coastal resiliency plan. So, this is just one example of how we can take data and analysis performed as part of a stormwater management plan and address it in the comprehensive plan and the type of impact that it could have on future generations within the city of Sebastian. The second one is taken from the public facilities element, and it describes the importance of mitigation strategies within the coastal resiliency plan. Discusses some of the impacts that water and flooding and future sea level rise will have on pump stations and the necessity to harden those pump stations in a way that will allow critical infrastructure to continue to perform despite any type of flooding or inundation. The third one discusses the effect also on public facilities, and it just quickly talks about development and redevelopment strategies. Now, this is something that's important to keep in mind because in a moment, I'm going to discuss some high-level holistic strategies that we've been poring over with staff for incorporation into the greater comprehensive plan update. But you'll see a line here that talks about development and redevelopment strategies should be used to reduce flood risk in these areas, defined by the Florida statute. And it also discusses existing street and structure flooding levels of service. So, what we're discussing here is opportunities for future development and redevelopment to occur in places that can truly support, through the use of infrastructure, increased population and development. So, what are the results of these amendments? The results are that they assist in better reflecting the threats of flooding and sea level rise while simultaneously improving the comprehensive plan's organization and structure. Once again, that readability-functionality piece. And then, it also integrates resiliency into the comprehensive plan. And that draws upon what I spoke about earlier when discussing how several initiatives are taken between these comprehensive plan updates. And this is just one thread of many that will be tied into the comprehensive plan update moving forward, and several other initiatives and pieces of this will continue to be threaded along. Here are those future comprehensive plan resiliency strategies for consideration. We have two really holistic land use strategies that are being used by several communities, coastal and otherwise, to direct development away from these very critical land uses. And when I speak about land uses, I'm discussing the type of land itself, rather than the use of the land in terms of a zoning strategy or something like that. But these are two broad-based strategies that could be used to really enforce resiliency and incentivize resiliency into the built environment. The first strategy is establishing an adaptation action area, and this would just be an area of the city that has specific land use regulations. And then, the second one is establishing a transfer of development rights program with sending and receiving zones. Locally, St. Lucie County has a pretty broad-based TDR program where they encourage compact development in their North St. Lucie area. So, taking that same frame of thought in terms of incentivizing certain things and disincentivizing other things is really the basis for the TDR program. And I'll discuss each of these a little more thoroughly. So, Strategy 1, establishing an adaptation action area. The map on the right is taken from our coastal resiliency plan, the 2019 coastal resiliency plan, and those oranges and reds are really seen as areas that are probably in line for the largest threat to both sea level rise or some type of inundation risk. And the same...
We saw that in 2004, so...
I'm sorry?
We saw that in 2004.
Okay.
Believe me.
Sure. And, I mean, this is nothing new, right?
No, of course.
It's the ocean doing what the ocean does, and the tide doing what the tide does, you know? But this is just an example of maybe places within the city that are most vulnerable to, you know, whether it be climate change or some other type of inundation risk or just flooding from a 100-year storm event. And so, the AAA is just an overlay district that would cover pieces of the city most vulnerable. You would adopt this overlay district based on the data and analysis and the modeling outlined in the coastal resiliency plan, so we already have established a baseline of vulnerability areas. And then, we would suggest that development within this overlay district comply with certain best practices. That would be flood-resistant design, construction engineering solutions. The American Society of Civil Engineers has, you know, several documents that talk about flood risk in coastal areas, and that's just one of those items. Low-impact development techniques that utilize natural features, whether it be kind of green stormwater solutions, green infrastructure, those are the types of things that we're talking about within this area. Excuse me. An example objective, since we're talking about comprehensive plans here, and by no means is this completely thorough, but just to give you an idea of what you might see if you like this type of strategy, is the objective and policy below. So, establishing an adaptation action area overlay district to minimize future risks, the city shall establish an AAA for areas that are vulnerable to coastal flooding and the impacts of sea level rise based on the data and modeling outlined within the coastal resiliency plan. An example policy would say, within the land development code, the city of Sebastian shall establish criteria for low-impact design, flood-resistant design for new development and redevelopment within the AAA. So, that's that kind of trickle-down in action. You have a state bill that's signed in 2015, legislation that makes its way into Florida statute in 2017 with certain language, moving its way into a comprehensive plan that's addressed in several different ways. The second strategy is establishing the transfer of development rights program that I discussed earlier. And that, we could use several different areas for that. We could use a coastal high hazard area that's already been adopted as part of the city's comprehensive plan, as well as several other municipalities and local municipalities' comprehensive plans. And create a sending zone. So, this is a little bit, and forgive me if you're familiar with these types of TDR programs, I'll give you just a basic overview. So, the idea behind transferring development rights is that you have sending zones and receiving zones. And you're taking development rights from one parcel of property, let's say it's in a sending zone, and it can be developed to 10 units an acre. But the person there says, "I'm going to develop it to five units an acre, and I could take those extra five units of acre that I'm not using and sell it to someone else." Or, conversely, they could not develop the property at all and sell those 10 units to someone else. We would say here that those units an acre or square footage of commercial space could only be taken from that property if it lands somewhere else. And that somewhere else would be a receiving zone. So, that receiving zone, we would identify areas that are upland, that have no risk of inundation, and say, direct the density there. We could be very specific or not specific about where exactly those receiving zones are. You know, there are several areas of the city that are upland that I would suggest we still wouldn't send density or intensity, but that's just something to consider. But that's the general idea behind a transfer of development rights program, is you're taking development rights from a place you don't want to see development and putting it in a place where it's more appropriate. And I think most importantly, and, you know, something that is always a concern of... And I think most importantly, and you know, something that is always a concern of local officials as well as maybe the city attorney, is taking. So a transfer of development rights program really allows the city to incentivize development in certain areas, disincentivize developments in certain areas without necessarily taking property rights. And once again, just a really quick example of what that would look like in a comprehensive plan through an objective and a policy. And I'll spare you hearing my voice, so read that to you. Other than that, unless
Thank you very much. And I just want to make sure that the commission understands that everything in yellow and blue, well, blue has been changed, shows a change, but mainly it's all the items that have been, that are underlined are new, okay, are the new additions. In the conservation and coastal management element, there's a lot of yellow and blue and underlines going on because they combined both those elements. So it's just kind of showing that they took one and put it all into, they took two and combined it into one, I should say. I think that it's, if you haven't already, the easiest way of really looking at what has been changed is utilizing the spreadsheet in front of you to really recognize what has happened. I guess that's about it for now. If you have any questions of Philip.
Can you go back and explain the yellow and the underlined one more time?
Sure. Yeah, so all we were trying to do is call attention to the edits that were being made within the plan. So in traditional sense, when we're updating any type of document, we would underline specific text and strike through any text that we're removing. Just highlighting is just a way to call attention to those items that were edited.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I had questions. What would be the situation of a development right for the people? Are we going to change all the zoning again based on these plans, comprehensive plan? Are we developing also the mitigation, mitigation thing? If people cannot build on certain property because of this comprehensive plan, what right they have to develop and they have to go through mitigations or what we have to do?
Well, to answer, that's very, actually a very good applicable question. We didn't change any development rights, and we won't be by the acceptance of these changes today. We already have an existence in our comprehensive plan and in our Land Development Code that in areas of sensitive lands such as floodplains, wetlands, even the river, the riparian area, that they have to comply by certain regulations and permitting in order to develop. I mean, that will not change, that has not changed. What is going to be the biggest change is just recognizing that we have these areas that are vulnerable and then trying to take mitigation action through our land development codes. And it's mainly geared towards public facilities. And one of the good things that was determined in this plan by our engineers and our staff is that most of our public facilities are in good shape. And it's because we've built those up on high ground. We don't have a lot down out by the coast or out by the river. And help me, Philip, if I'm not explaining this correctly. So we want to be able to incorporate into the plan the recognition of these vulnerable areas in some of the action plans that are in this plan. We're updating our stormwater master plan and making sure some of our septic pumps, the critical ones, the ones that are critical for the safety and welfare of the public, not private individual septic pumps, but more of the public ones, that they are, had been raised up or had been bolstered so that during floods or during catastrophes, they'll continue to function. And I believe there was only a handful at best, and there are Indian River County pumps that are in these critical areas, but there are actions that, you know, we can encourage Indian River County to do in order to bolster these critical pumps. Those are really the major changes that we're making right now. I know it looks like a lot of changes because of all the yellow and the underlining, but again, quite frankly, it's more the combining of both of those elements and the conservation and the coastal management element into one. That looks like that there was a lot more changes than there are. Now to answer your question regarding like TDRs or doing the action area. The areas, let's think of, nothing's going to be changed. If we put in a policy and state the city may want to consider enacting or looking at transfer of development rights, you know, as a utilization, that's just a policy statement. If we say the city may want to consider, it has a whole different meaning than the city shall enact TDR rights. Do you understand what I'm saying? So if, and this is a strategy we don't, we want to consider this evening, but we don't have to put into place this evening because this is going to come up again and again to your, for your consideration. But if we just want to be able to look at it and consider it for certain areas that we know are at risk for coastal flooding, let me give you an example. Some of the small lots along Riverside, along the river right there, a lot of them are joined up with the larger lot across from Indian River Drive on the west side, correct? Perhaps if there are TDRs, the small lots along the river, if you're a lot owner and you really can't build on that lot along the river, you could take some of those development rights and put it over to your lot on the west side. That's just an example of sending and a receiving zone that somebody we could consider establishing. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing that I would really like us to consider in the future as a strategy, one of the action items is to update our stormwater master plan. I would really like us to have a policy to look at and support low-impact design and best management practices with our stormwater management plan. A lot of our lots in the city are already developed. And so if you want to redevelop, you don't have a lot of room for stormwater to treat and store and move the stormwater off your site. So a lot of it just goes directly into the, you know, the roadway stormwater system and then flushes directly into the lagoon. And giving these property owners the ability to get credit for installing low-impact design criteria or best management practices within their lots really helps them, and it'll help the lagoon in the long run. So a policy statement such as that, you know, we encourage the city to consider low-impact design best management practices within the stormwater management plan, that's a policy. We may want to consider our strategy in the future. That's where we're going to be moving towards as we update this comprehensive plan for the next year.
Why are we doing so much work here? We don't have much area, actually. It's already developed. Most of the city limits are already developed, only a few areas along Indian River Drive, you know? So to me, it's okay what we're doing here, but as long as we don't restrict any zoning things and any other things, because some of the lot which you mentioned, they are not on the west side or Indian River Drive, they're just over there. That's my concern with the development right.
I understand exactly, and I want to assure you that we're not taking anybody's rights away, and we're not saying you have to do it. We're just offering it as an incentive. Anything that we would put in here would be an offering of incentive, unless we feel very strongly of something, and then it will be the city shall. So there's different language that one uses, and Mr. Stokes backed me up on that. It's either the city will consider or the city may want to consider, and then this gives us direction for the future in that consideration. If this commission or the city council really wants something to happen, then it will be the city shall. So that kind of language you have to be very careful with in your policies. Because whatever is in the plan, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, the plan is the comprehensive development plan of the city. And so what's in this plan should also be reflected in our land development codes and in our zoning codes. And that is what Philip was trying to bring forth to you in some of the changes that were done, you know, in the 1999 element, it was stating, this will be done by this date. And so what him and his team did was they went back through our whole land development code and compared and made, verified that it was done and, you know, when it was done. And so then the language was changed. Instead of having the date of 1999, when it was supposed to be done, you know, this will continue to be supported was added. Does that make sense for you? So those are a lot of the changes that were done in order to update this plan. Most of the major changes are just referencing the Coastal Resiliency Plan and the action items within it, which was to update, the major things were to update the stormwater management plan and what was number two?
The hardening.
The hardening, yes, of the bulkheads and the lift stations. You're correct. Okay.
I just want to add to, maybe I'm simplifying it, but for those that, we haven't worked with the comp plan a lot, you see it every, how many years we bring a text change? So there are certain amount of elements that the Florida statute requires us to have. Each one of those elements has two sections. There's your data and analysis, which is where, so say for like the future land use, it's going to tell, you know, how much square miles the city has. Of those square miles, how many are single-family homes? How much multi-family do we have? It's a section that gives us a lot of data. From that, you go into your goals, objectives, and policy section. And that's what, this is where this is, we're working on. You have a policy and then, I'm sorry, you have a goal that you said, this is the goal of the city. And then you have, under there, you're going to have a certain amount of policies that gets you to achieve that goal. That trickles down then, once that's all adopted, to then, how do we achieve those goals with our policies by changing the land development code? So that's just a really simple version. But I wanted to explain that there are two sections in each of those elements, that we do have data and analysis, and then you have your goals, objectives, and policies. And that's what we're working on here, is getting those goals and then setting up the policies under that for these elements to adapt the coastal resiliency ideas.
I don't mean to totally change the subject, but just there is a reference made by, you know, updating everything from a 1999 plan, and the plan I have is April 2009. So is that indicating that something was done in 1999 that was not updated in 2009? So what I have is not a complete comprehensive plan?
You don't have the complete comprehensive plan. What you have is the, there's, one of the elements that Kim Lee Horn added to and updated was the future land use element, and that was updated in 2009. So that's the element that you're looking at that's 2009. However, the other three elements that they updated are from 1999, and that's the coastal management, the conservation, and the public facilities. So we need to do our work in updating the data and analysis for those elements before we can take all of this to DEO for approval.
We did a lot of work in 2009. That's why I'm surprised that
You did a lot of work in 2009.
That has to be done that wasn't done.
No, it was in 2009, but those three elements were not updated at that time.
I think out of the nine or seven that we had, there was four or five that we updated in 2009 through the ear process, the evaluation appraisal report. And so you do have a complete plan, it's just some of those elements haven't been updated since 1999.
So our job today, excuse me to interrupt here, is to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you want us to do here today to approve this plan?
We are looking for your recommendation for approval
Okay.
That the changes that have been made are compatible with the comprehensive plan and that they will then be reviewed again at another time when we get the data and analysis updated for these elements. Because this is now going to be sent to the DEO in order to complete our grant and complete our legislative requirements.
What we have here today?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes, I have, the one question, like, in Chapter Five, it happens to do with floodplains and wetlands and so on and so forth. It's all been deleted, scratched through.
So
And I guess the question was, was it useless verbiage to start with or is it somewhere else?
That's, I'm going to venture a guess, and I'll look to Amanda to confirm, but any critical information was consolidated into the unified chapter. So anything to do with wetlands or habitats?
Flat woods and hardwoods and
It was not deleted, sir. Not at all.
Then mined into the other.
No, it's been all incorporated together. Our protection of the floodplains and our coastal areas, we are very much still doing that. And that language is in our comprehensive plan, and it has been trickled down to the land development code.
Thank you.
I'll ask a few questions. On your analysis, your engineers are using, what LiDAR data they're using for their ground? I know recently it was, it's been updated. Did they use the recent data? Our flood maps have been updated for our areas also. I'm curious on that. You're removing a lot of SWIM language. You're not modeling with SWIM anymore. Why is all the language being removed? You're modeling for 100 or 50 to 100-year storms. I know from experience that we have exceeded that with storms in the past, so engineering should know that. So I'm just curious, why are we still modeling for a 50 to 100-year storm instead of trying to model above that? So some survey related to engineering questions, I'm curious on that.
Yeah, I'll caveat everything by saying that I'm not an engineer, and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night. But yeah, really great questions. We had a kickoff meeting, and I think that's what was referenced for the November meeting, where several engineers from both the county, I think from, also from the Water Management District, Kim Lee Horn's engineers, city staff, and we all came together and discussed data needs, availability, what updates were occurring, whether it be LiDAR, firm status, really all the maps and analysis that could possibly go in. We received GIS data from Indian River County regarding their
Asbills.
Their Asbills and their lift stations. And we tried to absolutely be as thorough as we possibly could, use the latest and greatest data. I believe that there's a data source
There is.
Inside the plan, and I don't have the plan in front of me. If you'd like to list it, feel free, but
Probably.
I'll resend the email for you, Mr.
Beginning of the meeting, so I just thought I'd throw it out, and then we can all hear it.
Absolutely.
Feeling with that kind of data all the time.
I hear you.
Lack of Asbill data is very common, and you say, you know, they haven't been open in years, and sometimes you can't even find data, so.
Absolutely.
I just thought I'd throw those questions.
Yeah, hey, great questions, and we absolutely try to be as diligent as humanly possible.
Okay. I have, I've had, heard mention of check valves on other municipalities. Requires a lot of maintenance. Requires a lot of maintenance. Is this the final plan on some of your outfalls to retrofit them with check valves to eliminate? Or this is just really early stages, it's just to get our grants?
No, no, well, yes. Yes and yes. This is the plan to show where some of the vulnerabilities are. And now, you know, we are moving towards updating our stormwater master plan. And in that plan, we're going to be, you know, really doing some hard analysis of our outfalls and our seawalls, and making sure that those type of things have been hardened, I guess is the word I want. Again, I'm not an engineer, so, sorry if I'm not getting the correct terminology. You should read, you should read the report, Mr. Reyes. I'm sorry--
Oh, I will. I'm going to go home and read it.
It's very fascinating.
I'll report to you tomorrow.
And it's well, and it's well-written.
I read this all the time. I don't know that I want to go home and read it.
I hear you. But I'm sorry that you missed the presentation that the engineer from Kim Lee Horn actually did for the council.
I must have been absent that day.
It was very, very good.
One other question. I'm concerned about the transfer of development rights.
Okay.
Purchasing wetland bank rights or, is there a, is there a rule? Say I'm developing a five-acre lot on the river. Is there a percentage rule right now that we follow? Say you want to develop five acres, and we want them to, you're not, you know, maybe there's some wetlands or some, I guess it's a touchy subject. Mr. Stokes will probably correct me on that.
Well, let me give you a good example. So if you have five acres and one acre is a designated wetland area, it doesn't have any development rights.
I have answer for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you don't touch the wetland, you're okay.
Yes.
All right? But when you touch the wetland, then you have to go to mitigation process, through DEP.
And they, they all set what the threshold is, or how much?
They will value that thing, how much will it be impact, and they will tell you the fine, what's to do.
Thank you.
That is absolutely correct. Thank you.
I just want the rest of our commissioners to be aware of that.
But I just also want--
As Mary.
--to be aware that, again, if you have a five-acre site and one acre is wetlands, that one acre doesn't have any development rights. So, the four acres would have development rights, and if you chose to, you know, want to preserve that lot, somebody could buy the lot, and hence buy the development rights and transfer them somewhere else, where then it would be a little bit more density. Let me give you an example. Liberty Park here, that's going up in the county here, right just south of 510. They have purchased several pieces of property in the county, south of us, and have taken those development rights off those pieces of property and transferred those densities into Liberty Park. So, it is happening in different areas. So then Liberty Park can have a little bit more development rights, that piece of property, that development, and these other pieces of property remain undeveloped in perpetuity. So that's, that's a good example.
So as we have it now, we, we may or may not make them, or subject to having purchased development rights or to develop, say, you brought up words "shall" and "may."
Right.
Now, can you explain that a little?
Well, what I would recommend is that if this board wants to explore and thinks this has some legitimacy for the city, then the policy statement would be, the city of Sebastian, and I'm making this up on the fly, but the city of Sebastian may consider investigating transfer of development rights for utilization and coastal resiliency in the city. Something as simple as that. Then when that's a policy, that's just telling staff, "We want, we want to look at this."
Okay.
It doesn't change anything, because as you all know, nothing can get changed until it goes before you all and then the city council. So then if we put together a whole TDR study, we bring it to this commission, and you say, "No, we don't recommend that this goes any further," it wouldn't go any further. If you say, "This has legitimacy, we'd like it to, you know, be part of our land development codes," then it would go to the city council.
I think a good example that could be more locally understand how it would work for the city is, I have had quite a few, not only quite a few, but some calls regarding tiny home subdivisions. But you know that our zoning, our RM8, our medium density, only allows eight units per acre. But when you're doing tiny homes and eight units per acre, a lot of times, the acreage is not financially feasible for them to do only eight units, eight tiny homes on an acre. They're looking to get more density. So if, as explained in one of the strategies, if we were to do an overlay of an action area for, say, some of the lots along the river, because some of those, in the mixed zoning, they are allowed eight units per acre too, if somebody, if we decided to go that transfer development rights, we could say that you could purchase those lots or those rights from those lots. Those lots would then have to do some sort of document that says we're not going to build on these lots. But we could transfer those units to a developer that wanted to do a tiny home village, and now maybe he can get 12 or 16 units per acre for a tiny home. So, you know, it may help with some developments to be able to take some of those properties out of those vulnerable areas and overlay, but we can use it for a benefit of something, you know. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to get 30 homes on an acre now or something, but on a tiny home, that, those development transfer rights would help that type of development, that type of subdivision.
Thank you. That was, that was a great explanation of it. So it's kind of an overlay we would be doing for those coastal areas that we want to protect.
Yeah.
Question on the impact to adjoining areas when someone, using that example, would use eight, eight homes, and they bought rights somewhere else and added it to it. Now they have, say they used 12. What happens to the adjoining properties? Does that zoning of those adjoining properties have any impact on that transfer right?
No, they wouldn't change.
No, and the zoning wouldn't change either. It still would stay at RM8, eight units per acre, but it would, you know, through some documents and recorded documents and legal documents, you would get those, those units from the properties that now are not going to get developed. But it would not change the zoning. We would still consider it on R8. We're not changing the land use or the maximum density. You're just transferring some of those development rights.
Okay, so if it was R1 residential adjoining an R8, or multi-family, that, that would have no bearing on it?
No, and we already have, we have ordinances in place already, that if you're multi-family up against single-family, there's additional buffering, you know, landscape buffers, setbacks, things like that, that we could, that we already have in place, similarly for--
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that, to make sure that that still stays in effect. Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. I thought I read in here somewhere, it mentions something about design standards? Or did I not see something?
Well, you--
That we wanted to keep the spirit of the design of what Sebastian, what's supposed to be the fishing-type village. Did I read something in here about that?
I'm sure you, you did, Mr. Mahdi, because a lot of the language hasn't been changed. So I'm sure that, that would still be in there, I would imagine. I couldn't tell you exactly where at this point, but--
I, I thought I saw it, but when we get to that issue, and this is probably down the line somewhere, wouldn't it be, or should it be considered, that we do have a design standard that we're looking for?
Oh, here it is. I found it for you.
You found it? Where is it?
It's under the future land use, and you, it's under policy 1-2.9.6, Preservation of Existing Assets Within the Riverfront, and it talks about implementing the old Florida fishing village theme. And I believe we talked about this in April, and I did scan in the document that was the charrette, correct, that occurred, and where they came up with the old fishing village theme. I scanned it in, and it is now in the files. If you would like a copy of it, please let me know. I'll print it out, and it'll be at the front desk in our office. Mr. Mahdi, one? Okay. Two.
Your turn.
I, I agree with, once you look at this, I agree with the thought that we could tighten this up or maybe reinvestigate this in the future. And again, that's a policy statement. You know, we have here that we want to implement the old Florida fishing village theme, but a policy could be, you know, we may want to consider--
A design criteria?
Design criteria, tightening up what that really means, you know, re-looking at that. I mean, that's, that's, that is a policy statement that could then be incorporated in here. Or maybe not necessarily at this time. We're going to really get into the future land use plan in the future. But in this one, they were just trying to talk about the riverfront and making sure that we recognize that coastal resiliency is, should be looked at and considered in the riverfront.
In that manner, correct.
Right.
Okay. Any more deliberations or questions from the commissioners? Okay. Want to ask for a motion? Call for a motion? Approved?
This is just a review. We have to approve this thing? It's a review?
No, I would appreciate it if this commission, standing as the LPA, the Land Planning Agency, recommends that these changes be incorporated into the comprehensive plan for future transmittal to the, to the city council.
I'll make that motion. We're going to make a motion to--
No, but recommends that they get incorporated in the future.
Incorporate these new notes and to the public hearing on the review of proposed comprehensive plan text amendments to the future land use development, conservation and coastal management element, and public facilities element with regards to adaptation of the coastal resiliency plan.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Roth? Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mr. Mahdi?
Yes.
Mr. Kieselboch?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous in favor.
Thank you. You did a great, great presentation. Ms. Fraser, you're doing a great job on our comprehensive plan. I did attend the Train Your Commissioners, I believe it was, and it was, it's been a great help for this, so--
Well, I really appreciate--
I spent a lot of time reviewing this. Unfortunately, I missed the link on the email, but I will review it, and I may have further questions. This is early stages. Kim Lee Horn did a great job for us.
Well, I really appreciate this commission's patience and their forethought, because it's going to be a big job in front of us this next year, so we really, really appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you. Okay.
May I ask, what is the next step on this process?
So now we're going to take what you all recommended is, is the changes. We're going to compile all of this and send it up to DEP. And so we'll be complete with that grant and with these changes in the comp plan. They are not going to be formalized yet. Quite frankly, we have in the budget to begin this work, hopefully, right in October 1st. If I do, if I am successful in getting the grant from DEO, we may be able to start the future land use portion of it before October 1st. But then we're going to go hard and heavy on getting the data and analysis updated for all of these elements and start really compiling them. If, this is a good time to tell us, staff and Kim Lee Horn, is this a good way for you all to simplify your review without having to--
Break down, yeah. For me, the, breaking it down helps. Yes, it does.
Okay.
As long as we get it in a timely fashion. I still have not gotten it.
I do apologize, Mr. Carter. I don't know what happened to your, to your mail. I truly, I'm sorry.
I think we can, we can offer up that when it, when it does have something to do with the comprehensive plan, when there's a lot of reading, we'll hand-deliver. You know, there's, sometimes it doesn't, getting in the mail, sending you a link, taking that staff time with the car to deliver it to you, which we always do with site plans, it just sometimes isn't economically the best way to do it. But if it's something with comp plan and there's a lot to read, we'll go back to hand-deliver it and put it in a package by your door, if that works out for the comprehensive plan review. I think that may be best then.
And what we could also do is, let's say we send something out to you on Friday, but it's not for the second meeting in the queue. So that kind of gives you maybe even a whole month or three weeks to read it and really look at it and call us with questions.
That would be more advisable, because there's a lot to comprehend in this, and we don't want to make mistakes in our recommendations to you.
Absolutely. And this would give you a chance to call us and talk to us about things, or even sit down and go, "Okay, what does this mean? What does this mean?" We cannot express to you how much we appreciate your time. We understand it's volunteer, and I really, hats off, hence your gifts in front of you tonight.
You know, we have a lot of meetings that we don't have any agenda items. I'm willing to come in here for a lecture on this kind of stuff.
Or an update.
Or an update. This was coming up, you guys knew you were going to do this. I would have came. You know, it's, sure, we don't have agenda items, but maybe as staff, you can't just set up meetings when there's no agenda items, but that, that would be a good item to review with us up here. So, I know we've had two or three meetings that were canceled because of lack of agenda items. That would have been a great agenda item. Just a comment of mine. Good luck with your grant. $50,000 is not a lot of money. You could barely scratch the surface of that. I hope you guys get a lot more grant money. You know, I see some detailed survey, and there's a lot of stuff involved in this in the future, and you're not going to scratch the surface with 50 grand, so hopefully then people approving grants are listening, and they can give us a little more.
I hope so.
Yes, do you know where this money is? Do we already have allocated for any particular project, or if we do get it, or just--
The $50,000 that we received for the coastal resiliency plan, it was for the plan, and then phase two was incorporating the plan into the comprehensive plan. So that $50,000 will be reimbursed to us from DEO. So that work was, and that's, that was the contract with Kim Lee Horn, so we didn't have to pay a dime, which was really, really wonderful. To update, to properly update a complete comprehensive plan is quite costly, hence my looking for other grant dollars to help alleviate some of that cost. And so I went after a $40,000 grant with DEO just recently, just for the future land use element alone. And again, we're hopeful.
How much are, I think it was last year we approved a stormwater tax? How much of that money is going to this kind of, none?
I couldn't, not for a comprehensive plan, but it may be going towards the stormwater master plan, but that's really a question more for the city manager.
I attended a council meeting on that, where there was some discussion on it, and there was a lot of projects that, that I think the money were going to be applied to that, and it really wasn't updating our stormwater master plan. It was like the monies from the tax are being taken to finish some road projects or something. Probably shouldn't bring that up in this meeting, anyhow. So, any more unfinished business, the next item, unfinished business? Hey, buddy?
Mr. Simmons? None? Nope.
Okay.
Any updates?
Updates?
Any updates that we should know about?
You want me to go?
Mr., I just didn't know if Mr. Reyes was going to go through the commissioner matters.
I was kind of going to. So, we talked about not doing commissioner matters, so I was going to skip it and then do it at the end, and just, just as a fun thing, Mr. Stokes. Anyhow, yes, the city can provide us with updates. We'd be happy to hear.
Yes. A few things. A few things. We have, oh, I wish I had a calendar in front of me. Next month in July, you will not have a July 4th meeting, obviously, that will be canceled. But you have the opportunity to, to convene a special meeting if you, you're so willing on July 11th. We will be holding a meeting on July 18th. July 18th, we plan on two site plans being reviewed at that meeting and also a, a future land use map amendment in regard to a potential annexation that's coming into the city. So, this is going to be a pretty heavy meeting. If, if you're all comfortable with it, then that's fine. We'll do it all on the 18th. If you would like to spread things out a little, we can have one of the site plans on the 11th and have a special meeting. I'm, I'm leaving that up to the commission. Dory, am I correct?
I, I think we should, uh...
Open discussion here on that, guys?
I'd like to see it split because that's gonna be a pretty heavy load and it's gonna be a lot to take in and I, we don't wanna rush through it.
Anybody else?
Yes, I agree with you.
That sounds like a good plan. Would the city be able to accommodate that for us?
Absolutely. So, on the 11th of July, we'll have a meeting instead of the 4th and we'll have one of the site plans for you all to review.
Right, that way we can split it up.
Correct. And then on the 18th, we'll have another site plan for you to review. You're gonna get busier. And then a potential, uh, future land use map change for an annexation that may be coming into the city. It will be presented in front of the council on the 26th. The other item that I would really like to make sure that you are aware of is that we are a CDBG eligible city, meaning that the HUD dollars that are out there come to the City of Sebastian, we, we don't have to apply for them. We are eligible to get HUD dollars. We have not in the last several years because we didn't have an updated five-year consolidated plan. We have hired a consultant who's going to take us through the process. We are having, I believe you all received invitations to the 26th. We are having a workshop. We invited all of the planning and zoning board, am I correct?
No. Is that the one to, uh, no, I, I...
Those went out in the mail.
I got a letter.
I got the letter.
Yeah, it was, it was more of a, it was like...
That's, that's, you're writing something to do about the HUD, correct? Yes, yes, yes.
Correct. So, we're, we're asking, you know, our citizens and our stakeholders to come to this meeting and to review just a lot of some of, some of the eligible items that can, that these dollars can go towards. So, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing that to your attention. If you haven't received the invitation, please let us know, but, but that is going to be at 5:00 on June 26th here in the chamber. And it's, it's, it's a special meeting, it's a special workshop. We look forward to your input. The other item I wanted to bring to your attention is August 15th, we will be having a planning and zoning commission meeting because that's when you get the opportunity to review the CIP plan for the budget.
Could you repeat that?
The capital improvement plan. My goodness, I just, it went right out of me. The capital improvement plan that's part of our budget, our annual budget, it is your opportunity to review it on August 15th. So, I'm just putting these dates in front of you.
Will the city have the accountant do a presentation for it?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's all I have.
I just had a little notice. You've got, next to your chair two, there was the Muni code supplement. You haven't had one of those. This supplement covers the change to the code for the vacation rentals, which we had done last year, the walls and fences, where we changed the walls, some of that fence code, and also where we changed the personal service definition to allow the tattoo shops. So, those were all the changes in the land development code that, that supplement covers. And that's just, if you read that first page, it'll tell you which pages to change out, but it'll update your land development code, so you'll be up to date with, you'll have a current land development code book.
Okay, thank you. City attorney matters?
Good, I'm sorry.
Nothing from...
The, the meeting on August 15th, I'm sorry to interrupt. What, was that the 6:00?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, it'll be at your regularly scheduled planning and zoning commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And nothing from me, sir.
Okay. I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.